Okay, so we're now live. And since we've all gotten so used to doing our virtual meetings, just to let you know, the governor has, sorry, yes, the governor, got the president on the brain today for some reason. The governor has extended the virtual meeting process until the pandemic is declared over. So rather than continuing to do it piecemeal, it's going to be at least through September. Isn't that what Brianna said, Karen?
I believe so.
Yeah, so throughout the summer and everything, we'll, we'll be continuing to meet this way.
Wow.
Okay, we'll call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order this Wednesday, January 20th, 2001. Ms. Karen, if you could call a roll.
Yes, Don Daniels.
Here.
Ryan Pearson.
Here.
James Guerrero.
Here.
Paul Wagaman.
President.
And Connie Coleman Lackady is absent, and Nancy Hudson Eccles is excused, but you do have Quorum.
Great, thank you so much. Before us, we have the minutes of January 6th, 2021, and looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Mr. Wagaman made a motion. Do I have a second?
All second.
Mr. Pearson. Okay, so we have a first and a second. Any questions, concerns, changes? Hearing or seeing none at this time? All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none, minutes approved as written. Any changes to our agenda tonight, Ms. Spears?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And also we'll open it up. We have public comment available tonight, so we'll open that up. Do we have anyone in the, on YouTube or Zoom or signed up for the public comment period?
Have you gotten anybody, Ms. DeBrow?
No, I have not.
Okay. Seeing or hearing, nobody at this time will close the public comment period. And we do not have a public hearing tonight. So we'll move to number seven, unfinished business, the Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan and Hybrid Form Base Code Update. Ms. Spears.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first of all, tonight, I will be presenting information, but we also have with us Lisa Greeter. She is the lead staff contact that we had with Burke and Associates, who led themselves and a couple of subconsultants to develop this plan over the past year. So what I'm going to do is, is walk through a presentation. Lisa's here to answer any questions that you may have. Please stop me and ask whatever questions as I move through this, or we can certainly discuss things after the fact. So with that, I'll start sharing my screen. So I'm going to just start back a step and go kind of from the, the high level down into some of the changes that have occurred since your public hearing and the discussion that was had on January 6th by yourselves amongst yourselves regarding the draft at that point of the subarea plan and the development code. So here we have the, the map that shows the entire city, but what you see highlighted there in black hatchmarks and then again emphasized with the blue graphics are the boundaries of the subarea plan. It is southeast of the downtown subarea plan, which was the first one that was done in October of 2018. A little closer view of the subarea itself, this is satellite view, so you see the actual road network and building structure here. The location of the Sounder Station where I-5 parallels or is the southern boundary of the subarea plan. And then up here, we have the 512 interchange. The northern boundary is 108th Street Southwest, and the eastern boundary is Bridgeport Way Southwest. If you were to look at a larger section of this map, you would see just up here to the northeast, the Central Business District or the downtown subarea plan. And this has been the area where we've been focusing our attention for a number of different reasons over the last year. So existing land use. What you'll see is that there is a good mix of residential and commercial use, but there are some vacant lands. The residential development is up allowed under current zoning, up to 54 units an acre, but the average density in the plan area is only almost 12 units per acre. So there's quite a bit of room within the current zoning to increase density and housing capacity. What you have in terms of types of uses on the residential side is 60% of them are single-family homes. You have a small duplex or multiplex building is about a quarter of the structures, and then you have some multifamily units. That, we'll spend a little more time on in a, in a little bit, couple of slides away. Parcel sizes within this subarea plan range, everywhere from half an acre or less to over five acres. And what you see is that of the largest parcels, they are quite large because the 13 of them account for almost 40% of the land in the subarea. The half acre or less in size of parcels only are about 40 acres out of the 340 acre total. So with that amount of range and the different acreage sizes, there's a lot of different options that could be done, either with the parcel sizes as they are, or with lot consolidation, or with those larger parcels, potentially some subdivision. This is a map that shows you the existing land uses within the subarea plan. So the color coding is matched here in the key, but essentially these yellows and oranges and browns are the residential uses. And so the primarily residential section is the northeast section of the subareas, aside from Bridgeport Way itself. And then you have a little bit more residential across the other side of the railroad tracks and the Burlington Northern owned or Sound Transit owned properties. You have a little bit of industrial up here, this purplish color, and then again some over here by 115th. And, excuse me, transportation and utilities, and then you also do have the industrial right here. Then you have commercial, of course, throughout this whole parallel to I-5 and along Pacific Highway section of the subarea plan. You'll see St. Clair Hospital here, of course, is a huge economic driver and health services provider within the subarea plan as well. There's this little square, organa, excuse me, identified for recreation. And then you have a little education spot here, but for the most part, we're looking at either the residential uses or this commercial, either trade and food service or office and services within the subarea. What's proposed is much the same, meaning the zoning itself, the, the assigned zone for the area is not really changing. What's happening is the intent is to maximize and really mature, if you will, the density and uses available within each of the existing zones in order to kind of grow the place up. So what you'll see is there continues to be this multifamily and single-family as well residential area. And then you'll see transit oriented commercial through much of the same area where you already see that type of development. But again, the idea is to densify. The blue would be public and institutional, so this continues to be St. Clair. And then you have up here the Commercial 2 around the bend from Pacific up to South Tacoma Way. You have that light purple air corridor area, and if you remember, this is related to the Clear Zone and then the accident potential zones nearby Fort, I'm not, excuse me, the airport former Accord Field. And then on the eastern side here, this bright pink is neighborhood commercial. So what you've got are essentially the same zones, but again, we're talking about maturing and refining the uses within each one of those areas and helping to mature the area to have what is hoped to be almost 1,200 additional dwellings and over 1,200 additional jobs. So bringing a higher use on both sides of the page there in this subarea over time. This is another map of the same area, but it's showing you a couple of the key concepts that are incorporated into the Lakewood Station District's plan and then also the development code as the implementing document. So again, you'll see the brown is the multifamily, the blue is the institutional, that St. Clair area. This is rail and Sound Transit area. The red is the transit oriented commercial, orange is Commercial 2, NC neighborhood commercial is the pink. So all of those remain pretty much the same. The idea there is to increase density to up to 40 units per acre within the multifamily 3 zone and have it actually go up to 54 units per acre in the transit oriented commercial zone. The idea here is also to start to really encourage and support transit oriented development. So obviously with the connection to I-5 and 512, but also the connection to transit. The Sound Transit Station is right here in the middle of the subarea. You want to be able to assist people to get to and from that station either with a car or without it, and then to be able to commute into and out of the area. There's ideas of using live work opportunities in the subarea, meaning the same building where you're, or even the same unit where you're living, you're also working or vice versa. And then over on the affordability side, yes, we're going to continue to call these places multifamily or residential areas, but the type of housing, increasing the variety that's there. So as opposed to simply apartment building or single-family detached, having some attached single families, some row housing in particular, as well as updating or redeveloping some of the other multifamily units, and also making sure that homeownership continues to be a possibility in this area as well as rental. And then with walkability, trying to make sure that people can not only get to and from the Sounder Station, but also within this area, can they walk within their own neighborhood? Can they get to and from their job potentially without having to get into a car? And then there's also place making, so identifying areas where there can be a recognized public spot, whether it's a park or whether it's something else. And that's going to be done in this area a little bit differently than the conversation that was had with the downtown area, meaning it's more going to be on, on future private development to create some of those open spaces, as well as what the city might be able to do itself. So the form base code, and you'll remember the form base code discussions that we had regarding the downtown subarea plan, but it's a similar setup. There's a new chapter that's being developed, it's titled, or chapter 18C for the Lakewood Municipal Code. And it sets up an overlay that's the entire boundaries of this subarea. And it's going to be what controls development and redevelopment in this area if a question is asked, if there's a conflict somehow. It uses the streets again, like the, in the downtown area, as the basis for determining not only the site design, meaning how a building is placed on a, on a property and what type of parking requirements there may be, but it steps back and away from within a particular zone, you have to do a particular type of use. Or within this area, it's got to be only these types of uses. It loosens things up and allows the type of the street to set up the design of the building without limiting as much as in other types of zoning and other types of development codes, what can go in that building. So you'll see the network in this key to the right, the green, the dark green. These are anticipated to be quote, "green streets," meaning enhanced walkability, enhanced vegetation and aesthetics along those routes. Residential streets have their own requirements. The arterial and mixed-use streets, so Bridgeport, Pacific Highway in particular here, have their own standards and allowed uses. And then the mixed-use, the dark blue, you'll see kind of feed throughout the area, again, their own set of rules and, and allowed uses, if you will. This is just one example. I'm sorry, is there a question?
I do, Tiffany, Paul Wagaman. Hey, going back to that last slide with the green streets. Is, is there, you know, I mean, the whole community is, you know, walkability. So the way they've got this set up here for this subarea plan, is, is it got some kind of looking ahead to how do you get into, you know, over to the, you know, town center or any of those kinds of things? Any, any thought given to that yet?
Yes, and I'm going to actually ask Lisa to help me answer that question as well.
So I think Tiffany, the idea was to have a strong connection from the station over to Bridgeport. And Bridgeport is one of those major arterial streets that was meant for landscape, consistent landscape improvements all along the corridor. So I think that was the, that was a link that, that we discussed. And I think Tiffany as well, on 111th, the city has already started to make some improvements, and it's in the CIP if I remember correctly. So there's already been a start on it. And we wanted to connect from Kendrick, from the station, the bridge, up to 111th to make that sort of strong connection and then over to Bridgeport.
And in addition to walkability, it is, maybe somebody's riding their bike, maybe somebody is wanting to take a transit option between the downtown and the Station District subareas. Being able to follow from 108th or Bridgeport or 111th to get right into the center of the station area is, is the idea.
I, I just have one other question, and this may be answered later. With, since we're going through this pandemic issue, you know, public transportation is, is maybe not getting the use it did before. Do we really, do we need to think about that a little bit and possibly make some change to what we're doing?
I don't know that that's the case. I've been tracking the discussions that are being had, for instance, by Sound Transit's board. They're actually tomorrow going to start discussing what to do with their projects that were originally going to be funded through Sound Transit 3, and deciding whether or not they're going to continue on the same schedule or if they need to postpone things or reschedule things. Pierce Transit is going to, through several processes, because obviously the revenue is significantly down, and there may be a need to change their construction schedule. But what I hear from those people that are providing information to their elected leaders, their boards, is that the amount of time that we've been in this pandemic and what it's done to transit travel in the next 20 years, in the next 30 years, it's not going to make a difference related to the long-term increasing demand for this type of transportation. So they are continuing to move forward with their plans for expansion of capacity and system, but they're just having to reset timing because of the loss of revenue that's been unexpected that's happened in '20 and will probably continue in '21.
Okay, thank you.
I know Mr. Bueller raised his hand, I think, at one point.
Yes, I did. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Mr. Bueller.
Just to let you know, the Energy and Climate Change Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan, which is coming before you later in the year, will have an extensive discussion about enhancing public transportation and walkability as a part of the plan itself. It also includes a proposal where the city needs to spend some money in updating its non-moderated transportation plan. So while this may not be covered in this particular document, you're going to see it becoming forward here very soon.
Thank you. All right.
All right, I'll keep going then. So the form base code, as I mentioned, and started to, to walk through, is very similar to what you saw in the downtown area. This is an example, and if you'll remember, this is the same type of a sample that you would have seen out of the downtown subarea code, where you see the building form, you see potentially the pedestrian and then automotive or, or transit pathways, and then you'll see these, these letters. And each one of them referred to a separate development requirement. So what I've done now is jumped over to this chart, and you'll see A through H. And those are the A through Hs along the bottom here of this graphic. And it shows you different requirements. So for instance, letter A was referring to the building height, and it's showing you that on the mixed-use street, you follow what the base zone requires, so what's already there in title 18A. First floor minimum height, which is number, or letter B, excuse me, shows you the height. Weather protection was letter D. Building setbacks or maximum setbacks, the front entrance, how much transparency is required, and the window transparency that's also required for different types of uses. So you would see the similar thing for each type of street. This is a linear frontage type, and then there's a number of others within the code, but they're all set up the same way. This is referring a little bit more into open space and green streets. Obviously, in this area, it's been developed, certainly, and there's a lot of built-out environment that doesn't have a lot of open space or parks for anyone to enjoy. And so the idea here is to, as Lisa was just mentioning, and improve a couple of areas for open space or green streets. These are primarily by the residential area of this subarea. And that's what the city would be planning to do over the next number of years. But in addition to that, the private development and redevelopment that'll be coming into this area will also be required to provide open space, public spaces, particularly the commercial and areas. And then the Lakewood Landing project that we've talked about a little bit is actually going to be including a public plaza in its first phase, which they're already starting to advertise now publicly, looking for developers. So we may end up with a mix of public built and then privately built but open to the public, open space and park development here over time. As far as transportation goes, unlike what happened with the downtown subarea plan, there's really no change suggested or recommended for the actual street network. The capacity is there with a couple of improvements made to signalization or striping on some intersections and some sections of road, but there's no proposal to add new roads at this point into the network. And there's also no suggested or recommended transportation mitigation fee. So what you're seeing here on the map is just showing you where certain types of arterial roads are located, where the Sounder is again, just for, for letting you see, to notice in reference to the rest of the area. There's pedestrian and bike improvements near the station. There's signal timing improvements for three different intersections. And then there's BRT improvements, or Bus Rapid Transit improvements that'll be coming into this area. BRT for those of you who may be aware, or those who aren't. The current BRT line is down Pacific Highway and going south from Tacoma out into unincorporated area. In Lakewood, they are next in line. So once that BRT line happens out in the county, there will be starting to redesign and create a BRT line into the city of Lakewood and maybe further south. So actually, I'm going to stop sharing again and seeing if there's any questions about what I've spoken about so far, open space or transportation or way to code and plan or setup?
Yes, Commissioner Guerrero.
Thank you. Yeah, you touched on it a little bit, that, the, the open space. So the green street makes sense to me, and then the, the little bit of open space that's designated is on Occident Street. And I'm curious if, how, how fleshed out that is.
Lisa, are you able to help answer that?
I think the, the idea there is, if we, I don't know if we have an aerial in the PowerPoint or not, but there's, there's kind of an alley-type situation happening there in a pretty wide right-of-way that looks like it could have some repurposing a bit or a shared use to create sort of a public gathering area.
So are you envisioning it still functioning as vehicle access, but, but then maybe more like our festival street, is that?
Yeah, I think that, that was a concept that we were thinking of, because I think it still provides alley access to properties on both sides. But it is really wide. There is like a pretty big green strip in there already, and it looks like there's just more area than is needed for the level of usage that's there right now.
Okay, thank you.
I'm speaking. Oh, go ahead.
Speaking of the wide right-of-way, this has already been discussed a little bit with the Planning Commission, but the subarea has a number of streets, residential in particular, that are 80 feet the right-of-way, whereas the street design is only 60. And so part of what you're also going to see over time is potentially the city dedicating or, or, sorry, surpressing that extra, quote, "extra" right-of-way to either be used for open space or additional vegetation and non-pedestrian access along certain roadways. But that's not really clearly set out in this plan as of yet. That's something to be determined over time.
So Ms. Spears, also I have a question regarding that right-of-way. At our public hearing in regards to this first draft, there were some citizens that had some concerns about the right-of-way property lines. You know, they might have been encroached into the right-of-way and how close the streets are. And so can you explain or clarify a little bit of that as well?
Sure. There seemed to be a concern that the way the draft plan has things mapped and the rights-of-way mapped, that what was being intended for future improvement for pedestrian or bicycle access or just redesigning the streets to a new standard was going to actually not only take part of people's yards, but actually come into driveway spaces or even right up into homes. And first of all, there's a question as to whether the maps are that accurate. We're talking about GIS mapping and aerial views of things that are not the same as a, an actual survey. So it is not the intent, it's not even allowed at this point for the city to proceed with creating these new designs that would be taking private property from anyone. And secondly, yeah, just the confusion, I think, about whether those maps are as accurate as a survey would be was causing some concerns.
Good.
So we have gone back and verified that the particular corner that was the subject of a couple of different communications to the Planning Commission, that is already an area with 80-foot right-of-way. And so the only thing that would be happening there potentially over time is that the right-of-way would become narrower, not wider.
Right. Great, thank you for clarifying. No, see no other questions then, so continue on.
So the next big issue that came from not only public comment, but some of comments from you, the Planning Commission members, related to housing affordability and the risk of displacing people who live in this area. This is a map that has been incorporated into this latest draft of the plan that shows you some displacement risk. And this is something that the Puget Sound Regional Council put together for the whole region, but it's been refined here for specifically our subarea. And what you see actually is down in the key, you may have green, meaning there's a low risk of displacement of people. Yellow is the moderate and orange is the high. And in this part of the county, in this part of the city, there is no low area of displacement. It's either moderate or right down the corridor here between Lakeview Avenue and the Bridgeport Corridor, and then down south of I-5, it's all high displacement risk. And there's a number of reasons for that, but if you look directly at the subarea boundaries, it's right down where we have the majority of the residents in this subarea dwelling. So the, the concern is certainly legitimate that has been raised by the people who live there, as well as some of the Planning Commission members. And so part of what's been going on with the drafting of this plan is to take that into account and try to figure out how to best preserve the safe and continue to be usable housing as long as possible, but also to figure out how to develop new ownership and renter opportunities. new ownership and renter opportunities for people to continue to live in this area, even if they're not in the same house or unit that they're in right now. And so what you'll see in chapter three of the new version of the plan is some changes to the housing chapter that discuss this, as well as techniques or tools that the city has in place or is contemplating to help with preventing displacement. So I pulled a section of that whole sub area plan, just to bring it in a little more detail where the residential activity is, which again is in the area north of St. Clair and mostly to the east of Halcyon, but a little bit to the west. What you'll see also is that over fifty percent of the renters in the station district are cost burdened, meaning that more than thirty percent of their household income is spent on housing costs. And given the continued rise of economic pressures and the fact that throughout our region, housing prices continue to accelerate beyond salaries. The fact that you have a base that's largest on the west coast adjacent to the city, and those renters are also in our area. And the fact that housing prices in some cases have created new renters because people who are owning may not be able to continue to own, or those that are moving out of a house as a person growing older, maybe they want to move away from mom and dad's house. They're unable to find things that supply and demand in the classic form, where you continue to have more and more pressure on the rental properties because there are people here that can't necessarily own. Within the area, there's about nine hundred units total. And you'll see over here on the right in this chart, most of those units are multi-family and probably rentals. You have sixty-eight single story homes. You have units within an RV park. You have twenty units within multi-story apartment buildings. You have a single story duplexes. You have mixed use, so retail and residential units, a few of those. And then a one and a half story type structures, you have some duplexes. And then it gets lower and lower, but the vast majority are multi-family residential units. What you see here also is that seventy percent of those units, no matter the type, are renter occupied. So the homeownership rate here is inverse of what you see in most places, meaning that there's more owners than renters. In the city overall, and then particularly in the sub area, there's far more renters than there are owners. Vacancy rates are low, and in fact, that thirteen percent is probably woefully out of date. Obviously, with what's gone on in the last few years with the economy and then double that with COVID, the vacancy rate is far lower than that. And then in market rate, multifamily units, there's a ninety-seven occupancy rate as of twenty eighteen. And then affordable or subsidized in some way units, it was a ninety-nine percent occupancy rate. So there's just simply no vacant rates, or sorry, vacant units helping to keep the rates under control for residents and renters within Lakewood. So with the redevelopment that's probably going to be happening here and is frankly planned to be happening here within the sub area over the next couple of decades, you'll see a number of items that are already included in Lakewood's municipal code or in its strategies, its comprehensive plan, or it's, it's just as daily activities to help maintain existing houses, but also helping people find homes to either rent or buy. And so down at the bottom of the page here, you'll see there's a down payment assistance program in place. The property tax exemptions that are in place for certain populations. Lakewood and Habitat for Humanity continue to partner to create new single family homes. There's the rental housing safety program, which is trying to ensure that those who do rent are renting a safe place because the landlord or property owners are now being required to make sure that they, they meet all sections of code regardless of the age of the property. Then you have to create new affordable housing units as time goes by. There is an incentive program chapter already in the the city code, which has not been used very much, if at all historically. But as we move forward, this may become more and more popular as time goes by. Parts of this area are within a multifamily property tax exemption area. You've got community development block grant and home funds that are used for affordable housing development within the city. There's the twenty sixty and the twenty-one sixty-three funds that Lakewood and Tacoma and Pierce County are all using to help support housing and homelessness prevention. And then there's the fourteen oh six program, which just went in place over the last, excuse me, year or so in Lakewood. Taking a portion of sales and use tax and setting it aside for supportive and affordable housing efforts. So with all of these things, the intent is to try to somehow balance keeping what's on the ground that's still usable and safe for people to live in, but also recognizing that redevelopment needs to happen here in order to recognize and realize the densities that are needed in this area for both jobs and housing. And the way to make the interaction between jobs and housing work even better in conjunction with the transit station. So this is the schedule as it sits right now. You have your conversation tonight, and then the next planning commission meeting on February third is the date at this point for action by the planning commission on the plan and the development code. A couple of weeks later, the city council will begin its review. There will be a couple of study sessions. The public hearing is scheduled for March fifteenth. And then the council is scheduled to take action on not only the plan and the code, but also the planned action ordinance that is based in CIPA on April fifth. And if they do, then the effective date for all three of those documents would be May fifth of this year. So I'll stop sharing again and just see if there's any questions for me or for Lisa.
So I do have another question, Ms. Spear, is the, also another comment or question was raised regarding parking and related to the amount of parking stalls per dwelling. I know it was back and forth. I can't remember if it was one, one and a half, two. That was a conversation. Has that been looked at or?
Yes, the draft now reads very similarly to the, the parking requirements that you saw in other parts of the code. Lisa, can you maybe clarify on my behalf a little better than I could?
There's, I think, a couple of things here. One is that we heard through stakeholder engagement that, that the parking ratios may be too low in some respects, and that the area is going to take a little longer to shift from, from sort of the more car centric to more, you know, multimodal. So we did adjust the rates a bit. Some do match other parts of the city's standard parking regulations. There is a little bit of difference in that the State Growth Management Act was amended recently. It was either twenty twenty or twenty nineteen to set what are some maximum ratios for some uses within a quarter mile. So we basically tried to match within the state law and bump the rates up a little bit more than what was in downtown, where I think there's a broader mix of uses to be had there than in this location.
Thank you, Ms. Gruder. Yes, Mr. Pearson.
So in the row houses section, it talked about kind of consolidated parking and maybe not requiring parking on site. And I do think that you know, that's, that's a pretty good idea, you know, forward thinking that, you know, when you know, vehicle centric isn't quite so popular anymore, that those areas could be redeveloped in the future instead of having kind of it all spread out. You could consolidate parking as much as possible. And then, you know, when the city is ready to kind of move forward towards the, you know, you know, transportation oriented, you know, mode, then that, that could help kind of free up more space to be I guess, more densely developed or used a little better. So I thought, yeah, I like that bit of text in there.
Good. Any other questions for either Lisa, Mr. Wegerman?
Yes, we, we had some concern about the affordable housing that were, that were brought up in, you know, on some of the public comment. Do, do we have a good solution for that yet or a good response to those citizens?
Well, as I just went through, there were some additions to the whole housing chapter. There's the recognition of the programs that the city currently has, whether they've been used or not by the public, that may change. Developers may start to access some of these tools a little more now that they would be considering building in this area. There's incentives in the chapter eighteen A ninety relating to housing. And then there's also the programs either to maintain existing rental housing as long as it is usable and safe, but also figuring out how to incentivize either homeownership for buyers or also to help with affordable construction. So turn to Lisa if there's anything else I missed.
I think that says it well. It was to better consolidate what programs are there to create new housing, what programs are there to support renters, including programs to help renters become owners. So I think Tiffany's right. It was to better consolidate and advertise, you know, what's available. Cause the city has a lot of programs and there are some tweaks to some of the strategies since, since the last draft as well, to reflect partnerships and things that are beyond code based, that the city has established and partners who have indicated interest in the sub area.
The homeownership center of Tacoma was part of the stakeholder group. And while they were doing that, they expressed an interest and a commitment to be looking at working in, in Lakewood now. They haven't done much in the past, but thinking about coming into the area to help with homeownership.
Well, I, you know, I mean, those are all good things. The, the bottom line is the sheer economics is, is that when, when an area starts improving and more people start coming in there, you have a good old supply and demand. And, and so just, just in its own nature, that supply and demand is going to make it unavailable for some people, you know, at certain socio economic. And, you know, and so it's a, it's a perennial problem that we always have. Where, where do people go if they don't have the resources to live at that level? You know, and so anyhow, that, that was, that was the discussion we had.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Dave, I don't know if there's anything else you'd want to add about what Lakewood's been doing or thinking about, but this is an issue, certainly not unique to Lakewood. Anytime there's a sense of redevelopment and interest in an area for that, the people that live or work there are subject to maybe some surprises, unfortunately.
Tiffany, can they hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I, I would also say that if you're going to be involved in some of these special programs, specifically with CDBT and Home, if you're in a situation where you have low income persons that are going to be relocated, you are required to provide relocation assistance. That relocation assistance is for a period of four years. And in certain specific examples, in the Silicon Community, when we were assisting Habitat for Humanity, city staff went out and found additional affordable houses for those persons that were displaced. And set up a program where their rent was stabilized for that period of time. I believe it also recovers some level of healthcare provisions as well. So you start using community development block grants for specific projects where relocation sets place, that triggers and trips in. In other situations, we have provided for relocation assistance depending upon the situation. If the housing unit is still activated or unstable, we do assist people in relocation as well. That is a perennial problem in Lakewood and continues to be an issue, given some of the poor housing that we have in the community. I think the programs that we have overall are very good, much better than most cities. We're fortunate that we do have connections with CDBT Home and with Pierce County on the twenty sixteen and twenty-one sixty-three funds. We work with them regularly on a variety of projects. One of the things you haven't seen in Lakewood is you haven't seen that many new affordable housing projects by nonprofits. And the reason being is there is a tendency to focus affordable housing in Tacoma in particular by nonprofits and other parts of Pierce County. And so far, it really hasn't been an area other than for home, a habitat for humanity to work in. But I think that may change over time. Does that help answer some of the questions you might have?
It, it, it does for me. And, you know, I mean, as you said, it's, it's a problem. Just the sheer economics of it, it's, you know, how, how do you solve it unless you just say, hey, this, this block of housing, you can just do whatever you want, which is, in a sense, we, we've got, you know, the classified under the homeless folks, people are just putting up their little tents wherever they want. And I, I don't think we as a community want that to happen. So you know, Dave, you, you and Tiffany, you both shared that there are programs out there. We, we're going to try and help those make people understand that. And then you, and Dave, you just mentioned that, you know, you can relocate folks. And, and I think, you know, having been down in the Graham area, you know, when I door bailed, people, people want to live down there, but then they want all the amenities too. Well, the, the housing's you know, at a better price, but they don't have a bus service. They don't have some of those things. So I, I think somehow if, if we have low, lower cost housing, there, there needs to be some way that they can get the transportation things which they can't afford. You know, in a sense, that's what's going to happen here. And, and if the, the train system, you know, after COVID's done, comes back to where it was, you know, Ryan just hit on it. I mean, it's going to be popular and people want to, they, they don't want to get in their car. They want to sit on the train and ride to their job. And maybe with COVID, people won't be riding as much anymore. So I don't know what's going to.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. And Mr. Guerrero.
Thank you. So it, it seemed like I had heard about some programs like up in Seattle where they, where they actually do require developers to, to, I'm not sure how they do. I think they're requiring to either set aside money for low income housing or the, they say you, you can give it to the government. The government will spend it on low income housing. And I'm curious if, if we're aware of those, but I'm also curious if this program is really the place for that anyways. But it, so, so I guess it's kind of two parts. Are there kind of those pretty aggressive programs around? And would they really even be written into the code this way, or would it come through a different mechanism into the city?
Can I ask, answer that question?
Go, Mr. Buwer.
Yes, there are programs where twenty-five percent of the new housing must be set aside for low and moderate income person. And we have a similar program in the code written right now where that is voluntary. Now, if the city council wants to make it mandatory, that's up to them, but, but that's a big change. And the other issue that I have personally is of having administered those kinds of programs in the past. The city ends up making sure that those units maintain are maintained for affordability. And so there is a general fund expenditure that goes with that. And if the council wants to do it, that's fine, but it will certainly in some way, yes, it will improve the level of affordability, but it will never reach the capacity that you're looking for. A good example of this is in Fairfax, Virginia, which first started this program. They have set aside a significant number of affordable housing units, but they have never met their demand. So if, if you can improve the situation, yes, but you're also imposing more development conditions on the property owner. So the council or the community needs to weigh whether or not they want to do that.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Buwer. Any other questions for Mrs. Spear? This is Gruder. Seeing or hearing none? Any other? Yes.
If, if the council wanted to go to some sort of mandatory inclusionary housing, it's a minor change to the existing code already in eighteen A. It would just be a few minor word changes and it would be done. But right now it is voluntary.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments and Ms. Spear? Do you have any closing remarks on that?
No, I would just say, given the drafts that you were provided for tonight, next time, if you're ready to do so, would be when you would be considering action. So if there's any amendments that you would want considered. So if there's any amendments that you would want considered, be ready with those, I guess, for your next discussion. Or if there's something that you might want to send to me through Karen ahead of time as a proposed amendment, we can circulate that to the rest of the commissioners. Uh, otherwise, the third would be when you would take action and then it would move on to the uh, city council. And then your attention is going to shift from this sub area plan over the next couple of meetings to um, the twenty-one comprehensive plan amendments and the annual housing plan from the city and a couple of other items. So more to come soon on different topics.
Thank you. And thank you, uh, Ms. Gruder for all your diligent work and your team as well. So we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Great. Okay, well, um, move to any new business. I don't see anything under new business. So we'll move to reports from staff.
Uh, there's really nothing else other than to say, uh, the city council has not yet identified a new council, uh, commission member for you. They continue to consider that. Um, I did let them know and uh, just in casual conversation because it's not formal yet, about Nancy Hudson-Eckles pending leaving the commission. Um, and that, that will be a second opening that they'll need to fill this year if they can find the right people uh, for those spots. Otherwise, uh, nothing else from me, Mr. Chair.
Great. Any other comments from Mr. Wagaman?
Yeah, a question is, is, you know, if you're looking for new commissioners, do, do you have volunteers that the council is looking at? Or do we need to beat the bushes and try and get, or encourage people to volunteer?
I understand that five people uh, had submitted applications for Mr. Weber's position. Um, but for whatever reason, the council is wanting to seek more uh, people. So yes, the answer would be if you guys can beat the bushes, if you know someone who may be interested or a good candidate for either position, uh, that would be good.
Thank you. And Mr. Guerrero?
Yes, I had, I had mentioned um, an interest in doing a, a short PowerPoint on parking. I'm wondering if, if that would be okay to schedule for our next meeting. I think it might be helpful just in um, kind of portraying my understanding of parking and maybe where it's going, so.
Uh, Ms. Spear, is that?
I think you'll have time on your next uh, agenda, if you'd like to do that. What, the big item is the adoption of this plan. So unless there are a number of amendments to discuss, you could do that.
Great. Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Guerrero. And Mr. Pearson, any other last comments? So um, I will uh, also just mention that I will be out of the country next um, on the third, but I will, um, my understanding is it's supposed to have good internet. Uh, I will do my best. I will definitely contact Ms. Connie, Vice Chair Connie Coleman-Lackerty. Um, but um, if all goes well, I'm leaving Saturday and, and out of the country till the eighth. But uh, I will do my very best. I'll let you know prior, I, I'm going to test it out on a couple of other Zoom meetings that I um, am required to, to do as well. So um, I'll see if this all works from out of the country.
You're going to be working on your vitamin D?
Yeah, well, something like that. It's always in that this time of the year, it's been, uh, yeah, so we'll try that.
You need, you need sunscreen or anything?
Uh, no, this, this skin, yeah, no, not at this time. No, so, okay, so and no other further comments or questions? Uh, I appreciate it and we'll call the planning commission.